Stand in open session. During closed session, there was an action requested. Discipline in reference to a subject of council's authority.
Can you speak now?
In closed session, there was an action brought forth pertaining to a discipline regarding a member subject to council authority. A call for censure was made and the second was not given, therefore the action is closed without action. Okay. Truth and taxation. Everybody open that up to the floor.
Does that need my computer to respond?
She's got a video too.
You need to open the public hearing.
Andy, do you want to give us the statute for opening public hearing?
Well, in this case, we're officially back open as a council. So, in this case, I would just say a motion to second to open the floor, then a motion to second to close the public hearing, the truth and taxation public hearing.
Motion two. Bring the session open.
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have an aye, Lloyd.
Aye.
Back to four of all. Okay, motion to close the council meeting for truth and taxation public hearing.
Then we would open it.
They're open, public hearing.
I don't know if the video's going to go on.
It's not going to work. And a second?
I'll second now.
Oh, sorry. So, the first vote you just took was to reopen the council meeting. I got you.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have one, I, Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries four of all.
I don't think the videos are around because I think they're just going to have to just go with what's in the packet. It says it's there, but it's not doing anything. There was a video that was sponsored by Lincoln and Sub Cities. I just talked about the how the taxes are calculated. Oh, here we go. Maybe it will.
Yeah.
Now it's not going to.
Yep, it's yours.
Hello Kitty, I've been waiting for you. What's this?
Oh, this is a piece of paper that says how much Hello Kitty costs.
I paid $20 out the money way we gave.
Oh, I think you paid a little bit more than that. Twenty dollars is not much Hello Kitty cost, but we paid $1.38 in sales tax for the government. Hey, did anything else come in the mail?
Yeah.
Bill, bill, junk mail. Oh, great. It's a property tax bill.
Property taxes, how much is it?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Well, that's a little bit more than it was last year.
Keeps going up and up.
Well, at least property taxes pay for things that we really use.
Mom, what a puppy taxes.
Well, property taxes are what moms and dads and businesses pay for services where they live. If you own property like this house in the city, you pay city taxes. Township folks pay township taxes. County residents and businesses pay county taxes. And if you live in a watershed district, you pay tax for that too. We also pay taxes to school districts, so there's money to pay your teachers so that you and all your friends can go to school.
Gee, that's a lot of bills.
Well, hopefully it all comes in one bill. That's what this is. The county sends one bill with the amount you owe everyone so you don't have to write lots of checks. They then pass the money on to cities.
So, how much do cities get?
Well, that depends. In our city, adults vote for people to represent them in the city council. The city council is made up of elected officials who decide how much money a city needs to provide services for everyone who lives and works there. This is called the property tax levy, which is the total amount of money needed for property owners for cities to deliver services. School districts, counties, and watershed districts all do the same thing. They have elected leaders who decide how much money their groups need.
Yesterday, I went to state cabinet with my class to read about state government.
The state collects tax money too. The Minnesota Legislature oversees how the property tax system works for all cities in the state. They tell cities and townships to pay for certain things. Cities and townships have no choice but to pay it. It's called an unfunded mandate.
Sunshine, I got an unfunded mandate. Play you. Play with me.
No matter what, thirty-five hundred dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah, but think about it. Our taxes are only thirty-five hundred dollars, but it's for the whole year for services that we have to have, like water, good roads, police, and fire services.
Well, if you look at it that way.
Well, we have to get to hockey. Hey, I heard the city expanded hours here at NYSR we have so more people could use it.
Yeah, but we favor the extension staff and our profit taxes.
That's true, but now people can use it at different times of the day, so it's more accessible to everyone. Plus, who else would make sure we have services like police, fire, trash collection, water? Only local government can provide that. And what about roaming minutes at work? That all costs money.
We won.
Good job.
That's a problem here, huh?
Let's get going.
Hey, how are you? You, you, how are you? Good, how are you?
Good, so I just got a property tax week on.
Oh.
Yeah, so every year I try to figure out how they make sense of it because they go up and they go down. Why is that?
Well, there are doubts to breathe with the property taxes can go up and down. City leaders come up with the city's budget. Then they figure out how much they need from everyone to fund city services that year. Did more people move to town and buy or build new homes? Well, that means more people can contribute to the pie if your taxes go down.
Wait a minute, there's a lot of development in here, but the property taxes still went up.
Maybe they decided to sweep streets more often or add police patrols. Then your taxes might go up. There's also this program called Local Government Aid. The state of Minnesota has a program for cities which can collect as much as other communities. If a city gets a bigger aid package, taxes can go down.
Well, I'm expecting my property taxes to go up next year because we're placing our debt.
Well, it may not because remember, more people come to town, then your piece of the pie gets smaller. We just got our property tax bill, and the taxes for the city went up, but the taxes on the school district actually went down.
Oh, I get how that works. So, when there's larger boundaries like school districts and counties, there's more people to share the tax burden.
Mom, why don't we keep it going? Okay.
Well, we're here to talk to our city council members about our property taxes. This is what we call a truth and taxation hearing. Remember we talked about this? It's where we talk to our city councilors about what we think of our tax bill.
Oh, yeah, it's the money we pay to the cities to get green water and let towards the job.
That's right, Con. And property taxes pay for a lot of things. Some of them are basically, others are services people just want to have.
Does everybody pay the same thing?
Now, remember, property taxes are different for everyone because it's based on the value of your property and other factors like development and how many people move to your city.
Why they're going to say those people up there?
Well, I'm going to ask them why our property taxes increased this year because it should be nice to pay less.
What if they say they can't blow the bill?
Well, then we can simply try to take part of the democratic process. Property taxes are a necessary part of government, and it's important to the great quality of life we have here in Minnesota.
Okay, open it up for any comments from the audience.
What is the proposed levy and the increase this year for the budget?
Proposed levy will be a 2.28% increase.
In the property tax?
Property tax.
In the property tax, in the tax rate. It's a two point. I thought I could get out of this, but. It escaped. I am. It's not doing anything. And I told my last year's, how does that compare to what we, what you budgeted last year? Is that about the same, or is that more or less?
We have an increase a little bit. We'll walk through that if you want to do that now. We can walk through so it's when it gets out of there, so bring up the document.
It's not going to meet, so it's not in bonding.
We could refer to page 29 and 30 in the packet.
It's thinking. You guys can go on, it's thinking.
Wendy, you want to walk us through the final levy certification and go through some of those issues, some of the changes that were on that in the budget?
What page did you say that was?
29 and 30 in the packet.
So, this year, our actual final levy is the same as our, as our preliminary levy was, which is $1,024,242, which is about a 10% increase over last year as far as budget-wise or levy-wise. But because of our increase in our tax capacity, it's, the tax rate itself has only got about a 2.28% increase. So, the dollar amount is a 10% increase over last year's levy, but because of the increase in tax capacity for this year, it brings the tax rate to a 2.28% increase. If I can get it to come back up here, I'll show you what I'm talking about. Page 30 shows kind of, I guess what I'm just trying to figure out is when I'm looking at, you know, let's say in a $200,000 house, are you looking at a $200 increase, or are you looking at, you know, $50 increase? So, if you have a $200,000 house, and you take 55, the new tax rate will be 55.14%. So, you take 2,000 times, or take, take the 55% times your $200,000 house. And last year's tax rate was 53 point, um, I have it right on my hand. Whatever 55.14 minus 2.28% is, so it's 53 something. So, it's just the difference of the, you know, the 2% higher. These computers are slow. As I start moving it, then it jumps. Okay, so here on this sheet, I kind of spelled it out. So, here's our budget, our revenue and our expenditures for this year. And then here's what I was talking about. Our levy is 1 million, our proposed levy was 1,024,242, and that's what we had talked about the other night as far as leaving the final levy, which actually is a 10% increase over last year. However, because of the change in the tax capacity, the increase in the tax capacity went from like 1.7 million to 1.8, it brings the tax rate to 55.14%, which is a 2.28% increase over last year. And the difference between last year and this year, the million dollars versus the 900 and some thousand from last year is we put extra money in our capital improvement fund to start funding projects that need to be done in the city, such as street repairs. We have a lot of streets in town. The big project, one of the big projects is this whole downtown area that has to be all redone, the streets and the water and sewer lines in them. So, we've been trying to start building up our capital improvement fund where we have never been really putting that much money away. And if we don't start now, we're not sure how we'll pay for the projects that need to be done in the near future. And with the increase in the tax capacity this year, this is the time to, if you're going to raise it, now is the time to do it because it doesn't, even though you go 10% higher, dollar-wise, the tax rate doesn't go up as high because of the increase in the tax capacity.
Drew, did you get your tax proposal already?
Yes.
Okay, I should show you what your increase is and break it down by where your Wright County increase is and where your city increase is, and the school was actually a decrease overall. I know mine was an increase of $37 overall. Kevin?
So, how is our tax rate, you know, the 55.14 approximately compared to like surrounding cities? Do we know that?
I don't know that.
Or to like prior years even?
I don't know.
Because they looked at that before, right?
Yeah, last year our tax rate was 53 something. It was like, I said, it's 2.28% higher this year. I don't know what Buffalo's, I didn't, I know Buffalo was going in at a 14% increase, but I don't know what their tax rate was. I'm assuming they also had an increase in their tax capacity. I know Waverly had a big tax capacity increase, so their tax rate probably would go down a little bit this year, but they were going to up their taxes to try to get in line, so I don't, I don't know for sure. Those are the only towns I talked to.
Would it be good to get comparisons of some sort? I mean, just to have an idea for some of that part. Some of you are.
You can get, well, the thing is, is you can get comparisons and you can compare it to other cities, but I guess the bottom line is, is what I, what I was just saying was, at some point, we need to start building our capital improvement fund so that we can do the projects that we need to do, fix the streets that need to be fixed. We've put everything on hold for like 10 years because of the economy, and at some point we have to look at, you know, what they just, they need to be done. I mean, some of the streets are literally starting to fall apart. I mean, Sean, Sean knows what's happening with some of them there.
Sean, do you want to elaborate a little bit on the capital improvement plan and some of the major projects that are outlined on that over the next 25 years?
I certainly can, Mr. Mayor. Justin and I, actually, all the commissions and staff and consultants, we've all been working on a capital improvement plan pretty much on and off for 2016. And we've identified several projects that are preliminary and going to be slated to hopefully be done between now and 2030. I was going to get this, go for adoption tonight, however, I'm still working on some financing aspects of it. I don't want to bring this without having an idea how we're going to pay for it, so we're still working on that. One of the items is, we're looking at well, a wellhouse, replace 80-year-old wellhouse and wells that were drilled in the 70s. Also, the 50,000 gallon water tower that sits here in Lyons Park, that's 86 years old. Those two projects alone are roughly 1.5 million. Ridgeway Town Site, which consists of Second Street, Center, Emerson, Dakota, street going to the school, and then one going past the Lutheran Church. That's a, I'm not sure if everybody's aware or not, Center Avenue, Second Street South, our big park out here is considered a county road. So, we're capitalizing with Wright County to do that cooperative project that they are going to, is their capital improvement project. They've slated 600,000 towards that project. Then they, once that project is done, those streets will be turned over to the city. That project alone is 4.38 million. That's all utilities that are approaching 50, 60 years old. Some of the other ones, we've got left turn lanes on Highway 12. Mid-odd's going to be scheduled to come through here and redo Highway 12 in 2021 to extend the, widen the street. There's curb work and add turn lanes to Highway 12 going east. That's 610,000. Then we got Trump Highway 25 going south. That's, that's preliminary scheduled for 2018. Then consists of some walking trail, some rightaway acquisition, and widening of shoulders, and also about 850 feet of water and sewer rain that needs to be replaced. That's 750,000. Just large and big main ticket items.
And those issues have been, there's a long time that we have not done major issue. I think the last major issue we did was Comenta Avenue, was the last major project we did. So, what we're looking at this year is to take advantage of some of the increase in our base to be able to increase the funds that we have available for capital improvement to lay in the, the funds for those ahead of time so that we do not have to levy those as property taxes against those people along those areas. Otherwise, they have to be levied at a tax, tax increase in that year that the project goes on. If it goes under code 429 funding, 20% of it has to be levied as a tax. So, in order not to have, we have a surprise tax bill, we want to save ahead for those projects that we know are coming to build that capital improvement project and be able to take care of infrastructure as those projects come up. And that's predominantly what we're doing.
Well, some of these are enterprise projects though too, right? Like the new wellhouse that'd be come out of our water bills.
And we are looking at funds for, some of those projects are too big to go into it to just our capital improvement fund because that's a small fund, it's not a huge fund. But those projects, Sean, we will be seeking funding for those as funding comes up. And some of the projects that are on our capital improvement plan will necessitate having additional funding before we can do them, simply because they're too big to do for us to handle as a smallish project.
But you are right, Evan, that there is something there that have to be paid by rates. The water tower, wellhouse, portions of the utility, underground utilities on the whole part of town here. We're looking very, very carefully at that to see where, where the levy portion of the funds, what it needs to fund, and the enterprise funds, fund that they need to fund as far as utilities set up.
Mr. Mayor, are there any other reasons for the 10% interest other than the capital improvement fund? Major reasons for that increase?
No, it's the capital improvement fund. The difference between last year and this year is about 90, is about 92,000, 93,000. And if you look here, where it's a general capital projects, we're putting 134,500. And last year, I think we put 30,000 in there. So, it's, it's generally right there.
Okay. And then?
Yeah.
And my, the second comment I have, the last week I was at Hennaworth City Council, and I looked for it, and I can't find it, but they had the list of all of the Wright County cities and their tax rate, and they all hover between, Hennaworth was, they wanted to keep theirs at 49.5. They also don't have a water or sewer system to manage. They have an outside, that comes from St. Michael. And, but they all hover between 50 and 55, 56% except for South Haven, which is like 80. They all follow pretty even, and then that one's way up there. And I, I don't know if it's because the tax capacity is so low and the services they have to provide to the city. Thank you, David. Anything further, any other questions? Yes.
I just have a question, maybe Wendy, we will answer because none of you guys were here at that point. And just on a personal note, I think what I'm hearing, I, I think you guys have done a good job. But I'm wondering with capital improvement, why during the boom years, why did councils at that point not, I mean, when the money was there, when there was a lot of it, why didn't they put money aside then for these types of things? Because, I mean, we're only talking, you know, 10 years ago, so something that's, you know, 80 years old now is still 70 years old then, and they hadn't known that.
Drew, if you look historically during the boom years, 2005, '06, and '07, there were pretty significant tax increases during those years that were, that were pretty healthy. I think, you know, one of them was 25% if I remember it. So, they were pretty healthy.
Because the tax capacity, at that time, the tax capacity grew in such a huge leap that, but since 2009.
Yeah, it's been zero, or I think the highest was.
I think we, this is only like maybe the third increase in taxes since 2009.
Yeah, I'm not complaining about that. I just wondered why nobody had to force a, you know, 10 years ago to start putting money aside for these things so that you guys could be doing these projects now.
Uh, I can't pack my. May I answer that, Drew?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
10 years ago, the capital improvement plan was to pay existing debt.
Oh, okay.
We had so much existing debt that the reserves that we had were used to pay that. And so, it's been, that's why you're not seeing a tax rate increase since 2009, or small one since 2009, sorry, I misspoke there. So, that was pretty much the philosophy from the council back then was, the capital improvement plan was to pay existing debt. Now, we're kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel from this, and things are starting to drop off as far as payment-wise is, or they will in the very near future. So, this is the time to start planning for where we're going to get our next well from, where are we going to have our next wellhouse for the next 50 years? We've got an 80-year-old water tower that's going to cost more to rehab than it is to build a new one. What are we going to do? So, that's, this is why we're doing what we're doing.
And in 2008, when everything came to a screeching halt, the tax capacity actually dropped. So, that's why we didn't do anything for so long, because it would have really made a big increase in everybody's taxes. So, we tried to stay just, you know, flat.
Any further? Motion to move, go in session.
I, motion two.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have one, I, Lloyd.
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries four of all. Okay. Motion to adopt the 2017 final levy and budget present question.
I, motion two, we got the 2017 budget and levy ads.
Second?
I'll second.
I have one, I, Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries four of all. Wright County Sheriff's Department, anything to add, Debbie?
Nothing too crazy. Pretty standard month, fall volumes, I believe a little bit lower, which is normal for this time of year. But nothing that's mind-boggling, I guess.
Any other questions? Wright County Sheriff's Department, excuse me, uh. Wright County Sheriff's Department, excuse me, have council activity report. Michelle?
Um, council meetings, truce and type, the budget meeting. Record rec, that's it.
Canvassing meeting, personnel committee meeting, the special personnel committee meeting, council budget meeting, the ELC, you know, for the gas outage and Excel energy, and the VFW meeting, flag retirement ceremony for our fifth Eagle Scout this year with Boy Scouts, taught at College of Mosher Science, and breakfast with San, San and Ben for conveniences.
Yes, we have, I also attended the flag retirement ceremony, which was really cool. We had our Thanksgiving baskets for all the service members for being on the yellow ribbon. Yeah, that was, that was a really good time. The budget workshop.
Lloyd?
Council meetings, budget meetings, personnel meetings, special meetings, WPM meetings.
Evan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I put it in your packet is the November activity report. If anybody has any questions on that they can answer. I'd like to direct your attention to the acknowledgements. I'd just like to acknowledge Joanne Vowles for her assistance throughout the year with our department projects. She was always a very beneficial ear to help us through some planning stages and getting grants and things like that. So, I'd just like to acknowledge her publicly at this meeting tonight.
Any questions? Thank you.
Um, next item, AED grant. So, I'll just read the news release that's going to get put in the next paper here. On, well, today, Montrose Fire Department was awarded an automatic electronic defibrillator for an AED through a grant program sponsored by the Shakopee Midwaukin Sioux Community. Chief Kevin Turpitt received the award at the Midwaukin Public Safety Facility located near Mystic Lake Casino in Prior Lake. The Shakopee Midwaukin Community awarded a hard start FRX automatic electronic defibrillator valued at $2,250. The new AED will be placed into service immediately and will replace one of the department's older AEDs. The Shakopee Midwaukin Sioux Community has ordered over 1,500 AEDs over the past several years in support of organizations who utilize these lifesaving tools. The Shakopee Midwaukin Sioux Community owns and operates two major casinos in the south metro, the largest being the Mystic Lake Casino. Montrose Fire Department is grateful for the award of the AED and would like to thank the Shakopee Midwaukin Sioux Community for the generous donation. So, we just got it today and it'll be put in service for tomorrow sometime, so thanks to them, yes.
What do you do with the old one that keep that in service?
That one will be kept in service as well to get rotated to one that more than likely, hopefully, will never get used. And we hope that none of these will ever get used. We rerun, it's about 1.3 cardiac arrest events per year. So, our hope is they'll never get used, but the one that's, this one can replace and be put on our engine so for community communities or for firefighters that see them fire or something like that, so. Well needed, so. Uh, the next item in your packet is emergency management question and answer. I just wanted to put this in there due to the recent events that are fresh in our minds due to the recent gas outage that we experienced. Overall, as the emergency management director and from being involved in the emergency service world for the past 20 or so years, basically since I was about 10 years old, I've been playing around in it. In my eyes and in the way that I see things work in other communities, what happened here was great overall compared to what I've seen some other communities and stuff suffer with. Excel Energy classified this as a very major incident. They don't experience these often. They don't anticipate to experience one again. It was very similar to something that happened up in Buffalo two or three years ago. And there were a lot of issues that went along with that one. Everything worked very smoothly. I'd like to commend city staff for coming in to help with things. Council for being online with Gregor and myself while we were at the ELC and working through things. Keeping comments and opinions and assumptions to a minimum on social media was a great benefit for me because I wasn't having to put out fires that other people were starting at times, whether it was community members, council members, city staff, other city personnel, or people from Waverly or the health side. It was overall from the entire community, it was a great response. Everybody had very great questions, for the most part, very little negativity. For us never having actually operated in an emergency incident such as that, I was very impressed with everyone's output. So, with that, if there's any questions at this time, I can answer them, I hope. If not, I will find the answers out.
I'd like to say a big thank you to Scott Johnson. He was the public affairs representative for Excel Energy. And to Excel Energy and the workers that came in, they called in over 110 teams, so something close to 300, 350 people to work on this event. And they lost pressure in the line, that's why they had to be restarted. Was the reason for everything having to be cut off to repressurize lines and then restart. It was a good thing to have control on the social media, that was really good. I have to thank Sean and Jason for coming out right away and being there to do whatever was needed and be prepped to bring some of the emergency stocks.